Join us in our nation's pledge. Commissioners, in front of you is an agenda that was amended from the one on the city's website. It added item number nine, other business, and it added item number six, appoint planning commission chair and vice chair that we need to do annually. There's no other changes, I'd seek a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, sign by by saying aye.
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 No? Motion carries. Item number five, approve planning commission meeting minutes from January 22nd, 2020. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 22nd.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Omissions, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, sign by by saying aye.
Aye.
No? Motion carries. Item number six, I'll split this into two and go with the appoint planning commission chair first.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Eric Lengness for planning commission chair.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, sign by by saying aye.
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 No? Motion carries. Item number six, B. Appointing Commission Vice Chair, motion?
Make a motion to appoint Susan Young Vice Chair.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? The only thing I'll say is Susan, I hope you don't have to hold any more meetings than you did the last year.
Deal.
Which for those in the audience is zero. All in favor, sign by by saying aye.
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 No? Motion carries. Item number seven, Whispering Pines parking lot variance in the Washington County CDA. So, how this will work is staff will present their recommendation, and then we'll give the developers an opportunity to come up to the podium and add anything else or answer questions that the commission might have. And we usually will accept any public comment that might exist in the audience as well, and they'll bring it back to the commission for a decision tonight. Donovan, can you kick us up, please?
Sure. What we have before us is the variance and site plan review of the Whispering Pines parking lot, you know, at the Whispering Pines apartment building, located at 7 Fifth Avenue Northwest, located on your screen coming up. And on the, on your screen, you can see the property as it's located just off North Lake Street, Highway 61. Access is from Fifth Avenue, and the parking lot's located in the south side. There are many mature trees on the parking lot, surround the parking lot, even there's a landscaped parking island currently. The, the Washington CDA is the owner and applicant in this situation. Mr. Bill Leitner and Neil Tessier, project architect, is, is in attendance. And this shows, again, you know, their, their sort of survey, the, this, this parking lot as it currently exists. What is proposed is expanding it to a total of thirty, thirty-six spaces to accommodate parking for the forty-unit apartment building. I believe they're all single-bedroom apartments, affordable units. And what the variance involves is location of the parking lot, its closest dimension, three feet from the public right-of-way, where the, the requirement is a, is a ten-foot setback for that. As they note in the submitted narrative, they initially did look at providing additional parking on the north side of the, of the, the building, and did, you know, quite a bit of design work with that and review with the Comfort Lake, Forest Lake, Watershed District. And then, given the cost of stormwater facilities and just price per space, it just didn't make economic sense. So they wanted to focus that, you know, parking lot expansion on the, in the existing parking lot and also add these extra spaces in order to have fully compliant ADA spaces and the maximum number, given the, you know, what's, what the site constraints. The, the, the parking lot is currently non, is non-compliant as far as the ADA, ADA parking, the stall size and the required amount of parking. The improvements being made, with the exception of the variance being sought, the, and these are variances related to the, as I mentioned, the front setback, as well, as well as stall depth. They're proposing eighteen rather than the twenty-foot required setback, as well as a variance for the parking lot perimeter landscaping, where there would be, you know, a, a tree, trees for every fifteen, twenty feet on this south side, provide some, some screening of the parking area from, from the public street. But, just to, just to reiterate, otherwise the parking lot is complying with current code, with the exception of the, it still doesn't have the full number of required parking. But the space themselves, I mean, what they're creating is, is much more usable and can serve more residents. There is a submitted light plan which shows two, two lights in the center of the, the, the parking lot with, with pole height that is compliant, as well as the photometric plan doesn't have any unacceptable light spillover onto the right-of-way or neighboring properties. There are, as shown in the aerial neighboring, you know, single-family homes. We did do the public notification of all, all owner, property owners within 350 feet of the property, as well as published, published notice in the Forest Lake Times. I didn't receive any, any inquiries or any comment from the public. And this also is, there is a public hearing for the, the variance as well, just to mention that. Except for the, 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 the lack of, you know, landscape buffering along the south side of the proposed parking lot, the parking, landscaping regulations, I believe, do meet, meet the standards, and there was a submitted landscaping plan. The Watershed District, Comfort Lake, Forest Lake, Watershed District has already issued their permit for this proposed plan. And also involved with this full approval, and this is set as a, a staff approval condition, is having MINDOT review and approval for any MINDOT permitting, because there's a ditch along here that the stormwater, the stormwater facilities will be conveying stormwater into those. And so, uh, here we go. Just showing the main stormwater pond being shown here, you know, to the west of the, the parking lot. The city engineer did review and offered his, his, his concerns, which none of them can't be addressed within another submittal, I believe. And the staff recommendation is to approve the site plan and approve the variance request to reduce the front parking lot setback to three feet, reduce the parking space length to eighteen feet, eliminate landscaping between the parking lot and public right-of-way with five conditions, which require, which include meeting the city engineers' requirements, Comfort Lake, Forest Lake, Watershed District permitting requirements, as well as MINDOT permitting requirements, having an improvement agreement executed, and the, the Washington County CDA submitting financial guarantees prior to any construction. At this point, I'd be happy to take any questions from the planning commission.
I'll, I'll start with one that I have, Donovan. You had noted that there is a public hearing for this, and I missed that that was needed on the agenda. Was it properly noticed? Because I'm looking on the website and it wasn't on that agenda either.
There is a sign at the property about the public hearing.
Is that the only legal?
No, we sent out approximately, was it twenty-seven notices, Karen? Do you recall?
I don't recall the number of notices, but they were sent out.
It said that there was a public hearing on the notices, all that was covered?
Correct, and as well as the, the notice in the Forest Lake Times on, you know, outside that, that ten-day, you know, required advance notice.
Just wanted to make sure. Are there other questions of staff?
I, I have one. The, on the west side, that, that, is that a holding pond then for stormwater? Or is there some sort of a drain in there that does tie into the storm sewer system somewhere?
Just a barge.
What?
It's just a barge.
A barge?
Bar, a borrow, a, a barge ditch, it's
Oh, a ditch?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Right, you can see where the EOF is.
When there's heavy flowage, it just stands in there, right? There's no place for it to go?
Well, it, no, there's an EOF, so it'll, it'll, it'll be conveyed out, you know, you can see in the screen here, approximately that, that location, into the, the MINDOT ditch there.
Right, well, that's what I mean, it's all just going to stay in that ditch from one street to the other street. There's no place for it to go.
I, I do a litter cleanup along there every spring and every fall, and the water doesn't go anywhere.
Because you can't see anything with snow, so it's just
Well, yeah, I do a litter cleanup there, and it's always, that's always a really bad area for us, but we have trouble getting litter out of it because it's always full of water.
Other questions of staff? The applicants, did you have anything to add, or did you want to come up to the podium?
Do you have a question?
Yes, I do.
If you could just state your name for the record.
Neil Tessier, Safe Engineering.
I'm Bill Leitner, Project Manager with the Washington County CDA.
Commissioner?
Where are you going to put the snow? I was, I've, I've been there a couple times since I received the notice, and it appears that you're already encroaching on the property toward the lake with snow from the parking lot that's on the opposite side from Lake Drive. You're going to have smaller parking spaces, and some of the snow was taking up the front piece of the parking spaces. I don't know if MINDOT would give you permission to pile snow in their right-of-way, but where you have snow piled now is up against Fifth, and then on, on the area toward Lake Drive, and on the area toward, toward North Shore. With smaller setbacks, I don't know where you're going to put snow. And we haven't had a lot this year, and it does appear that you already encroached at least some. And again, with the snow, I can't figure out exactly where the property line is, but eyeballing it a couple times, it, it looks to be a problem.
The setbacks on the east and west sides of the parking lot meet the city code. The setback on the south side does not meet city code. So, we do have a lot of room on the west side, which would be into the pond. And it's a bio-infiltration system, so we're going to subcut that pond three feet and put in two feet of sand and a foot of sand-peat mixture. So there will be a lot more infiltration. It won't just sit there and then overflow into the MINDOT ditch. So I think that's the primary snow area. You could do a little to the east as well.
My concern is not going to the east because you already appear to be encroaching on that property with snow. And, and from a, from a practical plowing point of view, I'm not sure that your plow guy, unless you give him very, very specific directions, is going to take that entire parking lot to the west. I, I just, I have a concern for the neighbor.
The new drainage pattern of the parking lot is going to sheet drain everything to the west. Right now, a lot of that water goes to the south and into the street, where there's a very shallow culvert that probably freezes every year. And if, I guess we can, we can address that with the snowplow company. I mean, I think maybe a little bit of snow could go to the east as he makes just one pass to get that over, but then we can push the rest of the snow to the west and into the infiltration pond.
The, it will be easier to plow it all the way to now because there's no no median, yeah, no, no center island. It is a challenge plowing when you've got cars parked, which is often the case that they stay parked for a while, so snow may build up on that east side with the cars parked there.
I'd like to address the, the only stalls that are the smaller stalls are on the outside of the parking lot. So we do have the current regulations met on the interior. And I understand your code is twenty-foot for all stalls. Some cities allow eighteen on the outside so that car overhang, you know, overhangs a parking lot.
In the summer.
Yes. We do have a lot of landscaping on both sides of that parking lot as well. Can we pull up the landscaping plan?
Sure.
It's, the new landscape plan is, there's, there's over a hundred new bushes and fifteen roughly trees. Yeah. Yeah, if you can see on the, on the, you're, you're directly to the east. Yeah.
Excuse me, if, we can, it's probably better if you want to come, you know, on the next, next step to get, we can address your concerns.
Yeah, most of those on the east side are taller. And there'll be a variation of arboida-type plants and taller, taller dogwoods, some lilacs, some hydrangeas over there that, some of those plants, like especially the hydrangeas, can give winter cover as well.
But if you plow snow on top of them,
Thank you.
They're not really going to do anything.
It's a difficult situation for any designer when the requirements require landscaping to be around the perimeter of the parking lot, and we have a lot of snow in Minnesota. It, it's very challenging. We have to move the snow, but we also have to cover the requirements of the landscaping.
Commissioner Miller, you have a question?
I have two questions. Lighting, I see, does it look like just two lights in the, in the parking lot?
Yep, there's currently existing two light poles, and these are going to be two new light poles. These are going to be far better, they're the LED fixtures, which, the new LED fixtures have a, a very good controllable cutoff angles. We originally had some lights around the outer perimeter, but it was determined that we were providing too much light for the needs of the parking lot and for overspill. So we corrected that, went to two light poles. It's going to be a little less lighting in the parking lot, but still adequate for safety needs.
Okay.
More than what's existing.
Yeah, more than what was existing, for sure.
And then, you have forty units in that building?
Correct.
I don't see a dumpster. Where's your, where's the garbage go?
Inside the building. There's a trash chute, and you can kind of see the service drive there. Then they roll the dumpster out, and the, the trash truck takes it from there.
From the parking lot? Or?
Yeah.
I guess I don't see it.
But there's not, so, so the dumpster is remain, stays inside the building, and then they roll it out when it's, you know, trash day.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Young?
Donovan. I, I want to be understanding of our code, but I also need to be somewhat practical. And you're absolutely correct. Piling snow on top of those, those trees to the west is not, is not going to help with longevity. The bonus points for the trees to the east is that if you don't pile snow on them, you won't be encroaching on the lot line, and that will be helpful to, I'm assuming, the folks on the east. What if something like a, a line of reed grass, which gives you some height in the summer times, but doesn't give two hoots and a holler about getting snow piled on it in the wintertime? Or something else that would grow fairly fast and tallish in the, in the summer? My concern, gentlemen, is that you're going to put considerable dollars, including public dollars, into landscaping on the west side that that is not going to survive well. And then, because we would require you to redo it, and redo it, and redo it, that that would be on unreasonable extent. I don't want to set you up for failure, but I also understand why in, in our zoning code and our requirements, we ask that these parking lots be screened.
It is a difficult situation, and I have been doing this for a long time, and I do pick out plants that are very, very hardy, can take a lot of abuse, and take very little maintenance, which has been a request of Washington County CDA from us for a long time. I'm not saying that we might not get a plant that's going to die, but we, I'm, Bill, you have to speak for me, but we will replace any that do.
The betulia, that's a
A weggelia?
No, the betulia.
Uh, which one are you looking at?
It's a tree. And, and, and on my screen, I can't see the common name, I'm sorry. I should know that one.
Which one?
Thank you. Oh, the birch?
Yeah, we have some birch on the east side of the property, three-clump birch. We also have a maple. On the northeast side of the property, we have some ivory silks, which is like a flowering lilac tree.
And they're pretty tough.
Yeah.
I'm not sure about the birches, but
No.
Well, the, the birches are, are going to be minimally affected by the snow plowing if, if we just were planning on pushing everything to the west.
And, and that would, that would be?
And then we have a row of evergreens on the outside boundary of the pond. Those are, those are
Blackhills.
Trees, right.
And that's on the, you know, the slope goes down and then up again, and that's where the trees are, and then down to the ditch. So it's not like the snow is going to be pushed up against the blackhill spruce, just the, the infiltration bond, pond in between.
What, what size spruce are those?
Uh, they'll be six feet tall planted.
And what's the spacing?
Uh, they're approximately twenty feet apart.
Okay. My only concern with any, any of the trees here is, you know, those are good for that location there, but you might want to reconsider those, the birch trees, just for the fact that there's the birch beetle that's been around, and it is in this area, has been killing off birch trees, so that might be one, not saying it is, but it might be one of those that you plant it, and within a year or two, it's going to be dead. They die from the top down, so.
We tried to give a little mixture, you know, I know certain landscapers plant everything maple trees and everything this side.
And it's good, I see you've got a mixture here and that, but you might, you might want to, it's, it's up to you, just you might want to consider changing that birch tree to something different, that's all.
We can do that.
I have one question for the applicant. The parking stall length reduction from twenty feet to eighteen that you're requesting, is that all the parking spaces or just those on the ends?
On the, on the west and east side. The middle stalls are the twenties. That's where we usually have more conflict as people are parking head to head towards each other.
I wanted to primarily make sure that all of the handicap spots will have full-length stalls.
All the handicaps do, and full width and full access aisles.
So, that was a, one of the primary concerns in driving the need to do this project is because there are two ADA units in the building, as well as people with disabilities who don't even live in the ADA units. So, those are, those are important spaces, that they be fully compliant. Right now, they're not. They're, you're offloading into the drive lane. And it's, it's just a, an ADA space in terms of reserving a space that's near the door. That's it. There's not space to, for any offloading right now. So, that is a big driver here, is to make sure that we have fully compliant ADA spots for people that use them every day.
Is three enough for a forty-unit complex? I mean, I see there's room there for a fourth one, but, you know, that's, that's going to be up to you of
The minimum's two, right?
Yeah, we're, we're over the minimum requirement. And I think we had talked about that, we can easily turn, if, if, if they need it on the site, we can easily turn
Change it later.
Fourth, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a bit of a dilemma because, I mean, there's forty units, and we're only still getting up to, was it thirty-six?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, so we're still not even giving a spot for every unit. And, you know, when this was built back in the seventies, it, it was a senior building. Seniors didn't drive as much, you know, over sixty-five. And this building now accommodates people with disabilities, and that means it's under, half the population is under sixty-five. So there's just more people driving, more demand for these spaces. It's been a longstanding issue, and it's, it's a, it's a big task to redo it. So, it's a very tight space, and so we had to make some accommodations there of wanting to have at least two for the ADA spots, for the ADA units, and then inside, and then have an extra one for the resident that has, does not live in the space, but still has a scooter. So. It's a bit of a balancing act.
Are there other questions of the applicant? All right, thank you. Stick around, we might have more questions after the public hearing.
Happy to do so.
Thank you.
So my apologies earlier for saying that we would have public comment. We actually have a public hearing, so I'll open up the public hearing. And once I do so, I'll ask any member of the public that wishes to speak to come up to the podium. We'll try to be as friendly as we can and answer questions that might be obvious to us from looking at it, but we generally don't engage in dialogue. And we ask that you just state your name and your address. Public hearing is open. If there's anyone that wishes to speak?
Hi, I'm Ashley Phelps, and I am the resident to the east of this lot. And I'm just curious, is the parking lot moving to the east, expanding to the east also? Or is it only expanding to the south?
Donovan, can you clarify? It looks like on the graphic that it's not expanding to the east, is that correct?
It is, I don't have a dimension for you. It looks, I'll actually defer
It looks, I'll actually defer to the project engineer on that one. We're getting an answer for you? Neil, what...
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Is, is the, is there a change in that, in the parking lot on the east side? Is it, is it the same, or closer, further from the popping line?
I believe we held up to the same. The existing Panamanoa let a angle from north-east corner to south-east corner, and so it did get squared off.
The, the only concern that I would have if it is, is that as it stands, we have a handful of residents that cut across our driveway to go into that parking lot, which we've tried ourselves to ask them politely, can you not do that? You know, we like to just let our kids out in our yard to be free and play, and it makes us slightly uncomfortable. And I, my only concern would be if the parking lot moved that much, you know, even closer to the east, that maybe they would feel like it's even more convenient to continue to cross across our driveway. Or, that in this area right here, basically at the bottom of our driveway, just to the west of the end of our driveway, is where everybody likes to congregate to smoke cigarettes. And also, I would be concerned that if, you know, that they kind of try and follow the line, it seems like, still pretty close to just right at the end of our driveway, and if that was to move over any farther, if they would then feel like they're moving closer to just sitting right at the end of our driveway, you know, having their, their smoke breaks there, so. And I don't know if that's an issue that you, either of you would be handling with residents or not, or if that is an, an issue that could be addressed, or if there's a designated smoking area for them that is closer to the property, or... I know on the other side of the building, there isn't really, you know, there's a lot of green spaces without residents right next to it, just the street in front of it, but for whatever reason, that's where they decide that they like to smoke, but...
Do you prohibit smoking on the property?
I'm happy to respond, but I should probably first for the podium. And if it's a public hearing, you don't have to close the public hearing first?
We'll leave it open, you can come up and speak during the public hearing, yeah.
So, thank you for bringing those concerns to our attention. Residents driving on your driveway across the lawn to the parking lot is absolutely unacceptable, and if that is, ever happens, please notify us right away.
Okay.
That is dangerous and obviously not okay.
Okay.
I would say that, I think with the new landscaping, there's many trees there, and that will really, I think, act to say, you can't do this.
Don't walk here, yeah, that's not...
Yeah, you can't, yeah. Is it, they're walking, or are they driving?
No, they're walking.
Oh, they're walking? I thought you said they're dri, I thought you meant they're driving across.
That would've been addressed.
Yes, okay, okay. Okay, so residents are just walking across...
Cutting, basically cutting, yeah, across, you know,
Sure.
End of our driveway to create a shortcut to get to the parking lot, yeah, or the building.
Okay, okay. Okay, so, and, and you're not comfortable with that, you're not comfortable with that, okay. So, let me make that note, please. And then, the smoking is, is an issue that, you know, all of our properties are smoke-free, and, to the property line.
Yeah.
So, we can't really tell people what to do off, when they're off of the property. You know, they can't be on your property, obviously, but they go on the, in the street.
Yeah.
So, we can't...
So, if they are not in the street, but indeed on the property, is that, are they not following your rules?
Correct, but I mean, if they're in the right-of-way on the curb, that's...
Because normally, there's law, there's lawn chairs set up, you know, there, that's where they smoke, not on the curb, but...
Correct. Yes, we try to dissuade that as much as we can.
Okay.
It's, it's a challenge, but, and this has been one of the more difficult properties in that regard. So, you know, please voice your concern, and I'll pass those along to property management staff.
And then, to answer her second question, the parking lot on the east side currently is about thirty-two feet from their property line, and it is now going to be twenty feet from their property line.
Quite a bit.
But, still within city setback requirements.
Thank you, gentlemen. Did, did you have more comment, ma'am?
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't know exactly what the comment would be, just that, that it just feels a little unsettling to me, that it's encroaching, you know, closer to us. If it was like, I would maybe feel more comfortable if even instead of landscaping, it was a fence or something, so that it was very clear. This is not accessible to you guys as residents. This is your side, stay over here, don't use the driveway as a, as a, as a what shortcut, or what have you, just 'cause it is, you know, we've, the residents are generally, in the summertime, the kids can only play on one side of the yard, 'cause you can smell cigarette smoke all day long, you know? And that, to me, feels like they're, they're going to be moving closer. They're going, if the parking lot also moves closer, they, I would imagine, will also be feeling like, yeah, that's, this is more of the property of the apartment, and we're gonna kinda follow along that line, but we'll go to the curb when it's time to smoke, which then, that's right at, just right at the end of our driveway. I don't know what the solution to that is, 'cause I figured it was no smoking on the property, because we also had residents who would sit just right, right, park right by our mailbox for five, six, eight hours, smoking, 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 days on end, you know? 'Cause that's what I figured while they're trying to get off the property. Obviously, they would just sit in their car in the parking lot if that was an option for them, but I don't know what the solution is. I would, you know, I'd rather have them sitting there on the corner than sitting actually right in front of my house for hours, the way that they used to, but, yeah. These are, all I can do, I guess, is voice my concerns, and I don't know what the, what the resolution is, or how to come up with the middle ground, so that everybody is getting what they need out of it, but...
I think that with the improved landscaping on that eastern side, it will be much more obvious than it is now, where your property line is. And, some of those, some of the bushes there are discouraging to cut through.
Right.
Um, significantly discouraging to cut through. And, and I think that that may, I'd like to see what they are, maybe, maybe helpful to you on that. I, I think that that will be an improvement for you.
Can I just voice something real quick about that? My name's Brian Johnson, same residence. In this front there...
Can you come up to the microphone? Frank, can you come to the...
There's people watching on TV at home.
Yeah, right. In the, in the front on the, what is that, the west side there, um, there's, it's sun all day, or that would be what, the south, or...
This is, yeah, this is south, yeah, this is west.
Where, where the driveway is.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, there's, there's sun there all day, and that's where they like to congregate. If you put a tree on that corner, they're gonna just stand right under that tree in the corner, they'll have their chairs right there, and then, I mean, this is just something that's been an issue since we moved in, and they like to sit there and face their chairs at our house, and like stare at us as we live. And like, our kids are playing, and it makes us uncomfortable, and we ask them, you know, not to just stare at the kids while they're playing, you know? But, yeah, I guess that's just, all I wanted to point out is, you know, 'cause it's super sunny on that side, and they try to gather around the one little pine tree that's there, but I can just already know, once that tree goes up, that's where they're gonna be, yeah. And just voice my opinion, not expecting a response, but, you know...
Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak? We can bring you back up, too.
So, my question is, is if we were to do a privacy fence of some sort along that border, what other regulations that we should be aware of regarding that, in terms of height, or transparency, and size, that kinda thing?
Yes, certainly, um, the zoning code allows fences four feet in height.
How, say that again?
Four feet in height.
Four feet, that's, that's, okay.
Yeah, within thirty feet of that front lot line. It can be six feet beyond, which would probably be, put it, you could do six foot further back, somewhere around probably that, that second, that second tree here.
Thirty feet back from the property line at the street?
Yeah, yeah. It can go up to six feet, unless, of course, it's, you know, it was part of a variance.
Okay, it's okay to have it solid?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. At this time, you can certainly ask staff other questions, or we can entertain a motion.
I, I've got a question. I'm kind of in favor of the privacy fence on that east side, and I'm wel, I'm willing to vote for a variance for a six-foot fence out, out to the end. So, instead of four feet, and then six feet, just make it six feet all the way down. And then, maybe a recommendation is, and I've seen it like, at, at the Stillwater Hospital and Stillwater Clinics and stuff, where there's no smoking on, on site, they actually have a couple of those little, like, they stand up, you know, like, three feet high, where they put the ashes in there, and they put a couple chairs up, and maybe if you put them over on the west side of the entrance, and, you know, and designate that as your smoking area. I know it's not on their property, but that would kinda guide them over to the other side of the property, make the residents on the east side happy, and that's, but I don't know what everybody else thinks, that's just my idea.
Commissioner Miller?
Commissioner Keen, I, I like the idea of the privacy fence. My only concern is having that six-foot-high fence all the way to the street, not being able to see as you're backing out of that driveway.
Maybe not all the way to the street, but, you know, but they could work with the city on that, maybe you just go, you know, maybe twenty feet in, or fif, twelve feet in, you know, so that when the residents come out, they can also see from their driveway, 'cause that entrance to the, the senior center there, that's plenty far, plenty enough distance away from that fence, where they can see, you know, once they pull out, they should be able to see. But, I mean, that's, it's just, it was just the first thought that came to my mind, and it could be tweaked a little.
Commissioner Young? You're giving me the look, you wanna speak?
Donovan, is there precedent for the planning commission as one of our recommendations to state that we would be willing to have staff and the applicant work together to consider a solid fence as a partial mitigation for required landscaping on the east side?
I believe that's a proper, it's a proper direction you can give the staff to work, and, and the applicant, and obviously, probably the neighbors as well, to be involved in that conversation as, as a condition of approval.
Okay, then...
I was gonna say, in broad terms, I, I agree with you, Commissioner Young. With, with the fence coming up and moving towards the front, the, the fence, I think, blocking the neighbors coming out of the driveway, it's less of a concern if it only goes as far as the parking lot, if the parking lot setback was actually what our city standard is.
But they're moving it to three feet.
Right. And, so I like the fence up to the length of the, the parking lot, although I'm a little hesitant to say what height that should be at what distance tonight, and I, I do like the idea of staff. I still have concerns with setting a precedence of moving the parking lot three feet. And I don't remember any precedence where we've done this. Essentially, what I can say is purely financial reasons of the applicant. We have certainly allowed things closer to the street when it's fitting of the neighborhood, for a garage, or a house, and various pieces. Or when there's reasons outside of finance. I can't remember a single instance where this planning commission has ever said, yes, we're gonna relax on this type of piece, because it's less expensive for the applicant. Can you point me to one, or others, where we've done this before, Donovan?
I can't point to one where it's been stated in that way, like, for instance, in, in the narrative. My thought goes to many times where it's actually more implicit than, than explicit, where, you know, economics are a factor, and, you know, the actual variance requirement that, you know, meaning, having a practical difficulty with meeting the strict standard of the zoning code. It's not always clear, it's not clearly defined, what is that practical difficulty? And do believe that often at times, that is involving some economic concern of the applicant. The, where I see the practical difficulty here is, and of course, is not, you know, the fault of the applicant, and actually, the, the city was the owner of this building until, I think, 2011. But the way it's, it's located, oh, should I make sure the aerial, the way it's located on the site, it's somewhat in the middle, and so, if it was located either, you know, more to the, with, you know, more to the north, I think it would be really easily, you know, achievable to have the, the parking lot at, at a required setback. And I believe that it's, the, you know, I mean, the economic concern is, is one thing, and also noted in, in the narrative is, you, we should have one less access that's nearby, that, you know, the, the state highway, you know, on here, it's, which probably produces a more safer result, not having another access there.
Commissioner Young?
I think that there have been several occasions where applicants have come in and said, we can't have X number of parking spaces, or we need to reduce parking spaces, because economically, we, we, we can't, this property or this development won't work. I, we've had a couple of them historically, where they have asked for a setback, a large building on Lake Street, for a setback in sidewalk reduction, because they needed the extra footprint to make the development work financially. And so, that, that has been an issue. This one, they can't go to the north, because the requirements of the watershed district are, are, they just don't have room for it to deal with the additional impervious surface. So, I, I don't see this as any different than several other developers who have come in and, and asked for variances, especially on the parking side of life, because it would make their development economically unfeasible. Or, it is economically onerous.
Commissioner Keen?
I, I recollect the, a building that just went up in the last year or two, at the split here, where the, where it comes down, I think it's a Steph Steiner property there on the left, where the old license bureau used to be. Their parking lot comes right up to the sidewalk, and the sidewalk, then it's the highway. It's only, that might only be four feet, so...
And I believe in that zoning, that's allowed.
That, there was, there were variances for that, that side, at that parking lot location, to the south, and I think the east as well.
I mean, that's the only one I can think of, right off the top of my head, but, 'cause that, that just went up not too long ago, and, I mean, it looks nice. I have a question for, is the employee parking, is that just on the street, then? All the employees park on the street?
There is part-time maintenance staff and part-time site management. So, they would park, usually the maintenance guy parks where the garbage truck would go, you know, there's that drive lane there, and then, I don't know where the staff person parks when they're there.
That's the only staff you have, two?
Yeah, and that's part-time. I don't think the staff is there full-time every day. I think they're, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or, you know, occasionally during the week, staggered. Yes?
Commissioner Young?
You, you mentioned your garbage, but you also have recycling dumpsters there, correct? In accordance with county policy and state law?
I can't answer that. I don't, I don't know. Sorry. So, I will say that the, um, we, we need to do the variance in order to make the project feasible. Otherwise, we won't, it's not practical to do a project, we'd only get three spaces. So we can't spend $200,000 in a parking lot and only get three spaces, that's not meeting the objective. So...
Commissioner Young?
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a recommendation, um, that, that we approve the site plan review with the five staff, I believe it's only five, five staff recommendations? Um, yes, with the five staff recommendations, and, um, an additional recommendation, number six, that to the maximum extent practical, snow, um, storage beyond the west of the property, and with a seventh recommendation, that the applicant and the city, um, work together, um, to, um, to place a, a solid fence between this property and the property to the east, and that landscaping requirements, um, be mitigated, um, or reduced, use both words, um, to affect the fencing.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I have one question for the maker of the motion, Susan, if you'd entertain that. Can you... Explain to me in your motion, what would occur if the applicant didn't agree with our city staff's wishes, demands, whatever it might be phrased at?
They can appeal that back here.
So, so the motion, for my understanding and clarity, would be that the applicant would need to agree with city staff, and if they didn't, they could appeal that staff decision to us?
Correct.
Yeah. I just wanted to have that clear on the record.
And I think that, um, that there is a genuine desire on the part of the applicant and of the city, um, to make this situation the best for the residents of the facility to achieve the extra parking, and to be good neighbors. So I, 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 I count on good intent on both sides.
Okay, is there other discussion?
Just in terms of the fence to the, to the maker of the motion, is there a length that we want to, uh, have the staff and the applicant have with that, like, the length of the driveway up to the garage, or ten feet, twenty feet, um, or just whatever they determine?
I'm going to let the applicant and staff work, work on that.
Is there a consideration of height, excessive height, granted a variance, an excessive four feet?
I, I believe that six feet would be most appropriate, consider, realize that we have an apartment building next to a residential property. I think that six feet would be most appropriate, with the caveat that we need to maintain sightlines at the entrances of both the applicant's driveway and the driveway to the east.
So could the, could the motion, um, be stated as a solid fence up to six feet in height?
I would be happy to make that amendment.
Okay.
Are you moving that amendment?
Yes, I, 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 hold you. We have to vote on the amendment. Um, yes, I, I move that the motion be amended to state that the subject fence may be up to six feet in height.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
So, now we're on only the amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Okay, so we'll vote, if you're voting on this, you're voting to amend the original motion, not voting on the original motion. So all in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
No? Motion is amended. So it's up to six feet, we're back to the original young motion. Is there any further discussion? From a point of staff direction, my preference would be that the fence goes back to either the length of the parking lot, or approximately where the building joins. I think it's unnecessary to have the fence go all the way to Sixth Street.
Sixth Avenue.
And Sixth Avenue, northeast, thank you. But I, I think a fence along almost that entire length of the 520 property would probably be ideal. I would also suggest that staff, if I remember right, there's, there's regulations on how close a fence has to be to the property line, and yada, 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 and I don't have them off the top of my head, but the 520 property line, whether you guys realize it or not, it appears that your driveway is saddled right on the property line, possibly actually on their property, and that probably goes back long before you even owned it, I'm guessing. I would advise staff be somewhat lenient in that fence, understanding the, um, historical precedents that's been set with their existing driveway, and the use of that property. Is there any other comments? All in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
No, motion carries. Good luck to the applicants. If you guys have questions for us, you can certainly hang around, and staff will be happy to answer that for you.
Thank you so much.
Item...
I, I want to thank the applicants for being willing to find good solutions.
Good luck on your project. Item number eight, Headwaters Village Land Use, Land Use Planning, it's a discussion-only item, so...
Certainly. Um, this, this discussion, of course, is prompted by, um, a recent planning commission discussion around, um, a concept plan, uh, for this Headwaters Village area, located, you know, just off Headbars Parkway, in west of Highway 61. The, um, the, uh, what kind of, the gist of it is that in 2007, the city, um, approved a land use development, um, with a host of neighborhood recreational uses for this area. It's approximately 15.5 acres, um, for the site, is shown here, you know, the rough, the color-coded site plan showing the landscaping. And, uh, so you, so you have Headbars Parkway here, Fitzgerald Trail here, and Highway 61, Harwood Creek Trail on the east side here. So what we see here is basically the, you know, retail shopping center with, you know, buildings hugging the street, and, you know, interior parking in many cases, um, you know, and this is, uh, you know, with the idea, it would, there would be, you know, convenience retail here, you know, like, a gas station, and everything, you know, over 6,000, 60,000 square feet for this area, it's approximately seven acres or so, leaving this, um, seven, eight-acre parcel not as part of that original plan, you know, as, as shown here, but still having that neighborhood commercial zoning. So that was, you know, 2007. And then we, you know, fast forward to, you know, 2020, and what we have here on this, those same parcels, um, the, the veterinarian, um, approximately 3,500 square-foot building, the, what was formerly the Patriot Bank Building reopening soon as the Bell Bank Building, um, around 6,000 square feet, you know, with the, with the canopies for drive-through banking, and the other, other parcels vacant, um, and, you know, and, and for sale. Also, in the intervening time since 2007, um, the comp plan, you know, did, did, uh, designate this area in the future land use plan, you know, as mixed use. Um, and this is, you know, part of, you know, area-wide designation, including the Headwaters 123, a city-owned parcel here, south of the Parkway, some areas, you know, east of 61, west of 61. And so you can see this whole kind of red diagonal, tan-shaped area, is that mixed use, which is meant to be that range of, um, you know, retail, um, as well as office, and also with a required, um, you know, multiple-family, you know, residential use for 50% of this, this area. And that appears to be kind of the crux of the, uh, disagreement we had with, regarding the, the concept plan in that review. And what I'd like, what I'd like to discuss is basically, you know, how to reconcile, you know, the, the 2007 vision with the 2040 comp plan, and state, you know, how the, the comp plan, um, how it, you know, part of it does achieve the goals of having more intensive, uh, development, you know, by a regional transit investment, you know, otherwise known as the, this, uh, the, the park-and-ride here, as well as, um, and this is, you know, related to that, specifically to that, that, you know, the, the apartment building in the, in the, um, concept plan, um, it does achieve comp plan goals of providing affordable housing. Um, and at that level, the city has planned for, or is allocated, you know, as part of regional planning goal of 164 units of affordable housing within that, that range that was proposed, um, as part of this building. And so what I, you know, what I identified is, is, you know, potential issues with, um, you know, with, like, not allowing residential within this, this Headwaters Village area, is that, uh, you know, be involved with reallocating, you know, those housing that would have gone here elsewhere, um, and, uh, also recognizing that this location, which is adjacent to public utilities, you know, public water and sewer, a state highway, local activity center, including the YMCA, the Harvard Creek, you know, Service Center, which is, you know, could be a source of jobs, as well as the transit proximity. Question why that, that isn't a good location for a high-density residential in 2020. And, uh, then also, you know, what, what, looking around at the, at the, the market for retail and office uses, they're envisioned 27, 2007, where is that demand now, and can that demand be accommodated elsewhere, um, so that the, you know, the comp plan vision, you know, can be realized within this area? So those are some of the, some of the issues I brought up, and, you know, outlined some of those in the staff memo. I'd like to open up the discussion with, with, with the planning commission on, um, you know, we have just, we have the comp plan here, we have also the, the, the Headwaters Village, you know, adopted, um, PUD, so, you know, what are ways we can reconcile the two?
Donovan, could you please go back to the, um, picture with the land use with that nice brown hatched area?
Sure.
So basically, what you're telling me is that every acre within that brown hatched area, any development that goes on any acre, has to have 50% housing on every acre within that brown hatched area?
No.
Every five-acre parcel?
The way it's put in, in the, uh, planning commission, and there's, there's, there's spreadsheets that all relate to this, and basically, there's, you know, one of those, um, you can look at table 215 in the, in the staff memo, um, I'll bring it up here. Where basically, they're allocated, you know, the, the plan says that 10% of the, um, 4,920 housing units that the city is planned to bring, is planning for, as part of its, you know, regional allocation of housing, 10% of those are planned to be within this mixed-use area, you know, with the hatched area, which is, that's just a detail, and there's, it goes quite a ways down to, um, the city boundary on the south. And so it's 492 units there, um, and within the, this, the, the planning, um, horizon, basically, that, that could be achieved by putting, you know, 10 units per dwelling unit, 10 dwelling units per acre on 33 acres, I'm sorry, 15 dwelling units on 33 acres, or 10 units per acre on approximately 50 acres.
Okay. Where, what I'm getting to is, what you're implying is that the only place to put these particular housing units is in the middle of that area that was planned for commercial. That is the implication of the memo as I read it. And as I read the comp plan, which to my knowledge, the city has not had final adoption on, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Um, we don't have a zoning code that reflects that yet, which says specifically what kind of acreage we're, we're saying has to be 50, is it, is it every, every acre has to have 50%, is it every five-acre parcel, is it every 10-acre development? We, we have not identified that yet. From a planning perspective, having two commercial property outliers with a large residential development, as was proposed at that time, in the middle, is not conducive to our need for further commercial development in that area, nor does it make sense to the potential residents of that property, especially when it appears that there is a significant amount of what I'll call the mixed-use crosshatched area, that is still available beyond that seven acres to be used for residential housing. Am I mistaken in the amount of property that is available around that seven acres that is still available for residential property?
No, there's, there's ample, and I don't mean in the memo to imply that, you know, it has to be located here. I mean, I think there's, you know, I see strong reasons why it would work here, um, you know, what I'm talking about, you know, as far as higher density use near the transit, and, and it actually being affordable housing as well. But, you know, as shown here in the, this table, we're not specifying, the comp plan's not specifying that it needs to go, you know, in this, you know, at this, um, at the location that the, that the concept plan showed. Now, I think that, um, you know, as, you know, the, the way that, you know, the neighborhood village, you know, the Headwaters Village was envisioned, it was, you know, that concentrated residential use, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, commercial use. You know, can residential be inserted in there? I mean, I, I believe so. I know it, you know, I, I won't, uh, try to argue that it somehow doesn't dilute the strength of having retail, you know, combined, and the synergies of retail, you know, one, one person being able to park in one place, and just, you know, walk from shop to shop. I mean, reduces that area. I see on the north side of that, you know, of, of the, of what would be the Headwaters Boulevard, you know, future Headwaters Boulevard, um, you know, there's a significant amount of, of, you know, about eight acres there, that, that could also be that, that critical mass of retail, to provide that, that, you know, retail experience that I think, um, people want.
I think that that would also be a great place for your high-rise. Because it, again, it, it sets it off a little bit. One of the challenges that's been explained to me... One of the challenges that's been explained to me is having a single retail type, whether it be a veterinarian or whether it be a bank outpost, sort of sitting all by itself, so that I know that when I, I do my errands, I, I like having, it was a whole lot better when Lake Area Bank was right across from Kodiak, but I could park once and, and hit Kodiak, and hit the bank, and, and, and hit Danielis, okay? Life, life is good. It is very difficult for an establishment to be as successful if it's just an outpost all by itself. Blocked from others. I fully grant that I wish that the economy had been different and that this retail had filled in a couple of years ago. Jerry Danninger and I thought it would be really cool to put a, a coffee sandwich shop in there because you'd catch the commuters and you'd catch the apartment buildings. I think that there is value to the city in maintaining that particular seven acres as the commercial that it was envisioned. And I think that there is more than ample opportunity to get the higher density in another location. I grant that there is an owner of the property that would like to do something right now with the residential. I understand that. I also understand it's called speculative development for a reason. I, 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 obviously I have some strong feelings about this. We've made significant changes, many for the better, to that original large Headwaters PUD. This is one that I think the commercial opportunity that will come here with further development of the apartments, the two apartment complexes that are already built, the, the one that's going up across the road, I think that there is some opportunity in a couple of other areas adjacent to the transit. But I think that, that this commercial synergy will be important to the entire Headwaters project. It's just hard to be patient.
I can be patient.
And I don't know, I, I don't know what the, the rest of the planning commissioners are. I'd, I'd like your thoughts. If I'm completely off base.
I'm pretty close to Susan on this. For me, mixed use means it's commercial first, and it can allow residential. And so it, to me, it should have commercial components, and so the, the properties here could be much like the old City Hall complex, where it has commercial on the lower level and it has residential above it. I think when we, or, or it's just commercial, it just allows straight commercial properties like the bank or like the veterinarian. On that particular property, if we had some commercial components, we would have a nice, very easy commercial flow through there, and I think residential units can live above commercial or retail or various business pieces. And I think one of the things we have to really look at is, when the council many, many, many years ago, um, had approved these plans, one of the driving components, or one of the selling points, was that this commercial would be a large tax base. And that large tax space is what would support many of the significant city investments that went into this, um, which was well beyond just staff time. I fear that if you put an apartment building, as was proposed in that particular piece, without any commercial component, that that property just to the north or a little bit more east there, across the street, um, that was mentioned that you could put a high-rise on, would also become one. And then some of the other adjacent mixed-use properties could quickly start becoming mixed-use. And one of the things I hear constantly is we need, usually it's a grocery store down there, um, that's probably one of the more common ones. I hear we need a Caribou Coffee, that's another specific one, but I hear all sorts of business things that people want down there. Outside of developers, I can't say I've honestly ever heard anyone in our community say we need another apartment building down there. So am I open to apartment buildings in mixed use? Yes, but I think they should have a business and commercial or retail component, um, that's highly visible particularly through that corridor. Other commissioners?
Just a couple of thoughts. Donovan, do you know, approximately, off the top of your head, how many current apartment buildings we have in Forest Lake?
You mean, buildings or units?
No, buildings.
First. It's a ra, maybe mid-thirties.
Okay. And how many units would you estimate, then?
About twelve hundred.
And do we have many vacancies? Do you know?
I couldn't say, I don't know.
I'd be curious to know that. You know, I'm, I'm a proponent for housing, especially multi-unit housing, because obviously it can be much more affordable than single-family housing. I agree with both the commissioners, Young and, and Langness, that I would love to see a commercial, you know, commercial part of that, uh, building with residential, if, if, if that was an option. But my concern is we don't have enough housing available that's affordable, and my guess is with the buildings we have, they're probably full and they probably have a waiting list, and that's why I think we see so many coming to town for more. I could be wrong, but I'd like to know that, um, to see if there is a demand for more units. And, you know, I don't know what they were thinking in terms of cost, but, uh, you know, were they thinking, uh, one unit, uh, 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 one, one-bedroom units again, as well as two- and three-bedroom units in terms of, uh, cost of the, the, the apartments for rent, you know? Do you, did you have any idea?
Um, you mean specifically the concept plan?
Yeah, that concept plan we saw.
The commission reviewed. There were a few, I don't remember off the top of my head, I mean, because I wasn't thinking that, you know, we're not doing that review tonight, but it was, there were some three-bedroom units, you know, which are somewhat rare for new buildings. I believe the, uh, the affordability was between thirty-one and fifty percent of average median income, so it's considered, that's considered moderately, um, uh, low, affordable. And that's kind of where, you know, looking at the comp, at the comp plan, that this, you know, the city's expected to provide one hundred and fifty-four units in this, in this planning period. So that's why I see that, you know, that, that level, you know, taking, you know, decent chunk, because that's not, that's not going to come from just greater density, you know, that is going to be really concerted, that's going to be a nonprofit, that's going to be, you know, fortunately, no, no, no city subsidy required for that one. But, uh, you know.
Both commissioners make really good points. You know, I'm open, uh, I would be open, you know, I, obviously I love, uh, I love building, and, uh, I think when we have an opportunity for some more growth, I, I think that's, that's important. It may or may not be the right piece at the right time, but, um, I don't know, do we have a bunch of other people coming to town with plans or proposals for any more units of housing?
Not, um, I'm not cur, you know, currently not talking to any other multiple-family, you know, builders. There is, you know, some land that's zoned high-density residential that, that is, um, I should say, no, I am talking to, you know, some preliminary conversation with another apartment building dwel, um, builder, but, um, nothing submitted, and, but there are some, you know, high-density residential parcels that are for sale.
I'm just curious. That's all, just thinking a lot.
And, and we've, we have put up a significant number of, of apartment buildings. My concern with the, the most recent one that went up is that we have a glut of, of single, of one-bedroom properties, and when you talk to, um, the folks in the school district and at North Lakes and at, and at Lila, there is a dearth of two, three, four-bedroom units in this community. But the proposals that we get here are not for those, are those properties, they're, they're single-family because again, it, it is economically, you get a lot better, um, return on investment for a bunch of single family, or single-bedroom apartments or studio apartments, or sub-studio apartments than, than you do for a two- and three-bedroom. My, one hundred and fifty-four units over the next twenty years, I think, is very, very doable, extraordinarily doable. I don't think we have to do it all at once. And I think that we have some very good opportunities in the Headwaters development to achieve that. I just, my concern is that when we're talking about mixed-use development, and we're talking about a zoning area that's mixed-use development, I want to make sure that we aren't, that when we, when we talk about it, we define, does every acre have to meet that fifty percent? Fifty percent of that acre? Is it five-acre parcels? Is it ten-acre parcels? Is it fifty percent within the entire brown-hatched area? And I think that that is something that we'll need to talk about as we do the zoning code, um, and that, that's, am I correct in that, that's the proper place to, to do some of that work?
Oh, certainly, I mean, there's the, you know, you can see, um, how their, their ranges within this, this, you know, table two fifteen, um, and that, they're meant to show, um, you know, meant to, not to prescribe exactly where it goes at this comp plan level. And, you know, I, you know, but I think there's going to be, you know, as we look further into it, places that are, that are more suitable for residential. I mean, there's a long strip of that sixty-one where, um, I've already started to think about what, you know, how, how we'd accommodate residential there. And that's why one, in one sense, I look more favorably on something that's more removed from that main traffic artery and that's, that's around in this, you know, Headwaters Village area. There is, uh, also, you know, I have to kind of bring in, is part of the conversation and something that I think we'll be seeing at, uh, I think perhaps at the next meeting, is, um, also working within this mixed-use commercial area, um, a comp plan amendment that actually, um, allows for a, a use that's conducive to the tech, tech corridor initiative on the Headwaters one twenty-three city-owned parcel. Because we've started to market that as a, something for, basically as a job center. We're receiving some inquiries, and that fifty percent residential for that parcel is not acceptable to, to the, to the potential buyers of that, you know, who, users who would either be the data center or some sort of facility, and so, um, I get to kind of, you know, need to do some more, more work on that, but, you know, you know, the city meanwhile is really looking, you know, you know, this is, you know, Assistant City Administrator Dan, Dan Ondlin's big product, project right now is to bring this tech corridor forward, um, working with, with the Washington County and others. And, uh, and so, you know, part of, you know, the exercise we're doing here, discussing, you know, where's, how's it going to go within this mixed-use area, um, and it's going to be incomplete conversation tonight, I think, as you, you accurately acknowledge. We're going to be having that, a more conversation and kind of more of a challenge on how to, then, you know, if we're not putting, you know, uh, residential within that, you know, one twenty-three acre parcel, where's it going to go? And also this relates to, um, just public infrastructure as well. I mean, for, for us, you know, it's, it's pretty simple with zoning to kind of change colors of maps and represent, they represent different land uses, but underneath that, there's, you know, there's sewer capacity, there's water capacity issues, routing, you know, engineering, a whole host of engineering, engineering design considerations that, you know, when we change numbers, densities, locations of jobs and housing, that there, there, you know, there's some considerations that are underground, that are, you know, beyond our purview, but nev, nevertheless, you know, are part of those, you know, changing the colors of, of future land use maps. And so, you know, what, what I'm saying is that, um, no, that, that it doesn't mean, this doesn't mean that fifty percent of every parcel needs to be residential, um, but that, um, you know, it, we need to consider where the residential is going to go. And in, and doing my research on this, um, one of the, one of the first drafts didn't have that fifty, fifty percent requirement for, for this mixed-use land use category. But I think as, you know, as Jane Concierge, you know, delved deeper into it and just doing the math, doing, doing all the, just the, you know, having that, you know, that GIS, you know, data, parcel data, um, working with the acreage, realizing that, oh, we got to park ten percent of that residential density somewhere, and it needs to go in this, this area, it's, you know, pretty rather large landmass, um, but it's, it's, uh, you know, three hundred and thirty-three acre, three hundred and seventy-three acres, um, but in the end, we need to figure that out, or maybe put the density, you know, more of it downtown, you know, which potentially the city is doing a, um, a sewer capacity study in the downtown area to really, you know, setting gauges on sewer, on sewer lines to understand where we might have some constraints there, um, and, uh, potentially what, you know, what investment city has to make to accommodate more, more, you know, intensive use in this downtown area.
Well, I, I might also suggest, Donovan, that, um, there is a very, very large acreage of land that is highway commercial, that happened long after public comment, public review, public discussion, that happened at perhaps not the eleventh hour, but the tenth and a half hour, um, after many of the maps have been, been reviewed by folks, and, and I was quite surprised to see that. That that might be something that, if the city is looking for a significant amount of acreage, that somewhere in our twenty-year lookout, as we extend water, sewer, public works is my life, um, uh, and, and other infrastructure toward the south, there is a natural reaching of, you go to the north and Forest Lake to the south, that, um, there are going to be opportunities for the city to amend its, its comp plan. It's a living document, it's, it's not a casting concrete document, to, to reflect the needs of a potential data center, to reflect the needs of, of some commercial development, to, to reflect additional recreation opportunities. So, yes, I, I, I sound kind of inconcrete about this particular area, but it, but the opportunity to get some synergy around commercial that, that is very much lacking in that area, hugely lacking in that area. I, I really do not want to preclude that at this time.
That's, that conversation tonight had cleared up, uh, a few of my questions that I had, because it's, the way it's worded, it's the fifty percent in that zone, and so that's, that's what was confusing to me, that part was, so it, as long as it's, uh, you're going to adjust it to, you know, move this way or that way, um, it makes it a little more clear. But the way it's worded under the mixed use, it says fifty percent, so.
Are you seeking any other clarity from us, Donovan?
Well, let me, I don't believe so. I mean, I think what I'm hearing from commissioners on this evening, um, I, I'll just say that Justin was too ill to, to come this evening, and Mr. Commissioner Batty- was too ill to, to come this evening and Mr. Commissioner Batty was, was unable to attend. We're still waiting for another appointment. Sounds like you're, you're reconfirming what, what discussion we had at the, you know, with the concept plan review. Also, you know, I feel it's important that you understand some of the larger things that I didn't bring up, you know, it's more the, the planning context of some of the reasons why, you know, I think that multiple-family worked in that site. But, you know, you know, also acknowledge, yes, it could work in other sites as well. And, you know, it's, it's, and it's, I appreciate that in some ways you just trust me that that 50% does represent kind of a number. There's a whole host of assumptions around what that 50% is, just based on, you know, on properties, assumptions on what, what percentage will develop as multiple-family, even in what decade that will be, you know? So there's, you know, the spreadsheet I got from Jane that kind of, you know, is the, lays out all this is, you know, many tables and lots of linked cells. And so I will, you know, just also want to announce that, you know, we, to expect that basic comp plan amendment that related to the Headwaters 123, and we'll have this similar discussion, you know, in the near future.
Say Donovan, could you pull up that, the picture, that photo of the, where it says discussion Headwater PUD? It's just, I think it's one up.
You mean the-
One more.
This one or the-
Keep going, no, no.
Yeah.
Right there. Now, now that, that, that is 13 years old. You think maybe, maybe bring, bring some concept plans up to date, like, because they've got the, the dog kennel over there, the dog place over there, the bank is over here, you know, maybe come up with something that, where those are already here. And then maybe some sort of concept plans to bring in some commercial business and, and maybe some residential for, for people that come in and look at this stuff, they, it gives them ideas.
I mean, that, that is an approach. And I mean, I think that, I mean, some cities do that, they have, they have the staff capacity to basically do, you know, what you're referring is like almost small area planning.
Right, right. Because, because this picture's 13 years old.
It is.
People see that. And it's like, well, there's, building's already there, so they're not going to change, you know, and their parking lot's not going to change.
Yeah. You know, we, and we, we welcome, you know, PUD amendments.
Just an idea.
Yeah, sure. Okay.
No other discussion? We'll move on to other business. Councilmember Gerard, did you want to, well, welcome you up to the podium tonight before we adjourn.
Not the others been added?
The other was added, just for you.
Maybe I ought to change my middle name to Other. Just an update, as you recall, the last ti, I think it was the last time you met was regarding the farming over by Menards there. City Council did take that up and agreed with the planning commission on that. So that is moving forward. And that's really about all I have for updates today, but I will make one comment, Commissioner Langness, that with the comp plan, you know, it's slowly moving to the finish line. Not sure in my lifetime I'll see it, but I'm hoping to. But I believe we extend downtown almost up to six there, the curve around the lake there. So that, I think Whispering Pie, and I thought it went from 61 all the way to the lake, but I'm not 100% sure on it.
Yeah, I believe, I believe Sixth, Sixth Avenue is that, is the cutoff on that northern end.
And it goes from 61 to the lake, correct?
Yeah, correct. I believe so. Yeah.
So that'll end up in a different zone eventually also, which will make that probably a little more palatable.
Yeah, I have that, is, the, the, so what Councilmember Gerard is speaking about is, is that the mixed-use, I'm sorry, the, the downtown areas is extended northward here.
We have blank screens. I don't know what-
I'm sorry?
Are you looking at something northward?
Are you trying to show us something?
Yeah.
I am.
I hope not, because it, it ain't working.
It's hard to see.
I apologize.
It's invisible.
Yeah, it's coming back. Okay.
That, that helps.
So there, the Lavender is the lovely downtown district. That is, is what Councilmember Gerard is referring to.
Okay.
And as wa, as far as extending southward as well, to 11th.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything I can answer for the commission tonight? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Donovan, did you have anything for us tonight?
I'll just reiterate what Councilmember Gerard said that, well, he didn't say, because he, you know, I'm hoping he lives more than like six weeks, is that the Met Council is reviewing the Forest Lake comprehensive plan at three, at two commissions and the Metropolitan Council Board in, in the month of March. And so, you know, fingers crossed, that'll go to the City Council for formal adoption in April.
And then you'll have the text ready for reviewing, me?
The text, yes, of course.
All the changes to the zoning.
Yeah. I will anoint myself philosopher king. Which was always the reason I got into this business, I could, you know, be the, you know, the, the wise ruler and, and make everyone do what I want. But it hasn't really worked out that way. But, but do expect, you know, some, we're working with some future, some applicants, and so I think we'll, we will have a meeting, you know, some, some planning commission meetings in the spring. And I look forward to working with the planning commission on those.
Sounds good. Karen, did you have anything for us tonight?
No updates.
Updates from commissioners? None? We'll move on to adjournment if someone wants to move.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. It's non-debatable, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No? We're adjourned.